To call to order the Monday, September 11th Regular Meeting of the Farber School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. We have no one signed up tonight for citizens input, but we do have some recognition awards.
We could go down front.
Mr. Agia?
Just go down front. We have three awards today, and they're very special awards because of students, which is the best kind of awards we like to give. So, the College Board National Recognition Program awards academic honors to underrepresented students. The four national programs, recognition programs include the National African-American Recognition Program, National Hispanic Recognition Program, National Indigenous Recognition Program, and National Rural and Small Town Recognition Program. Students who take eligible administrations of the PSAT, or PACT, TEN, or AP exams will be considered for awards. Students must identify as black, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, indigenous, native, or attend high school in a rural area or small town. This is not a scholarship program, however, students can include this academic honor in their college and scholarship applications. And we're fortunate to have three people with us today, and the first one is Adunalo Olobanwa. I was close. Let's get a nice round of applause for her, who's going to stay up with us. The next one is Leah Rodriguez. If we could get one more round of applause and have the three young ladies come right in front. Thank you.
School committee member Paul Hart is joining us virtually tonight. Next up, item number four, Subcommittee Updates. We'll hear from the Parent and Community Outreach Chairperson, Sarah Rodericks.
So, the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee met on August 21st.
Sarah.
Oh, you can't hear me? Sorry.
Thank you.
How about now?
Yep.
Okay. So, the Family and Community Engagement Outreach Subcommittee met on August 21st. We had reviewed what we are doing to outreach to our families and to look at what our engagement efforts are. So, we reviewed a lot of the work around our out-of-school hours support, what summer engagement looked like, and it looks like we serviced a tremendous amount of students over the summer with a lot of great success. We reviewed our community partnerships and how we want to make sure that those partnerships continue throughout this school year in order to better support the needs of our kids and our families, and then the connection between what our staffing and what the, our social emotional learning programming really looks like and how that relates to our family engagement. So, we also started talking about what future planning looks like for the rest of the year, and we'll be meeting again soon to kind of check in and see where we're at with all of those pieces.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will start with the opening. As we all know, on August 30th, we welcome students in grades one through 12. On Tuesday, September 5th, we welcomed our younger scholars, our pre-K, most of our pre-K students. On Friday, September 8th, just this last Friday, we welcome back kindergarten. And tomorrow, Tuesday, September 12th, we will welcome the remaining nine classrooms of pre-K to our new site, the old Atlantis Charter Site located at 2501 South Main Street. Our enrollment stands at a healthy 10,785 as of today. Currently, we have 785 in kindergarten. Some of our students are still in the queue, so those numbers will fluctuate. Our pre-K stands at 432 across eight sites, six schools and two satellite sites, the Eastern Avenue Site as well as the 2501, and enrollment at Durfee is at 2438. For the most part, back-to-school transitions have been very smooth. We have had, I'm not going to lie, we have had some transportation glitches as everyone got themselves used to the routine of drop-off, pickup, times, routes, et cetera. We are getting lots of calls from parents who want to add children to buses. I will say, people have to be patient because that's not going to happen until the first week of October, simply because we have the students who actually, we are obligated to transport first. We have to run those routes for a few weeks before we can determine if there are open spots, and then after that, we will open up spots where available. Student registrations are still going strong. Please know that if you have to register a student, you should be doing that through our Parent and Community Engagement Center on Ray Street, not at individual schools. It's important to note that you can't just show up at your neighborhood school because that might be filled and you're going to have to go where there's space. So, the Parents Center will know exactly where there is space, and they will be the ones who will help you facilitate registration. Attendance is a major focus for us this year as we get ourselves back into good routines and good habits. We all know that our teachers can't do their jobs if kids aren't in school, so we ask families to partner with us as we support students to engage in their learning by developing good habits which will follow them throughout school and beyond. Average attendance for last week was 90.8, which is good, and the previous week, the first two days, it was at 88 percent, so as you can see, we've improved, and today's attendance was at 92, which is a very good sign. Now, for the hiring update, since our last school committee meeting, we have hired 80 additional folks. Thirty-six have been teachers, eight have been administrative positions, 25 paraprofessionals, eight educational support positions, and three operational support positions. Conversely, we have lost 20. We've had 20 resignations, 12 teachers, seven administrators. We have also had some paraprofessionals that have left us, some educational support. We had a recruitment event on August 24th, and we also attended the city's recruitment event on August 30th where we were able to gather 30 or so applicants, various positions that they applied for. Currently, we still have the following positions. We still have 74 teacher openings that are posted on our website. Of those, about 10 of them are interventionist/coach positions. The high-needs areas that we are still struggling, like mostly everybody, are ESL, Special Education, and Math positions. We have 36 paraprofessional positions currently still posted on our website, and that's the update.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions? Ms. Rodericks.
Quick question. Do you, I don't expect you to have it now, but just in comparison to what attendance looked like the first week of school last year, it'd be good to compare where we were then to where we are right now.
Yep, I will give you that for the comparison, absolutely.
Okay. We do not have any Item 6 student comment tonight. I do have three sets of minutes that I'd like to bundle together. On 7-1 is the approval of minutes from the Policy Subcommittee Meeting on 8-823. 7-2 is the approval of minutes from the Regular School Committee Meeting on 8-1423. And finally, item 7-3 is the approval of minutes from the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee Meeting on 8-2123. With no discussion, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the travel request for the Durfee High School girls soccer team to go to a Division One game at PC. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of requests, job requests. Yeah, just a summary report of some type. Right now, we never seen anything, so I'm just looking to see, like, what is it actually checking? What is it, what are we utilizing it for? That's all.
Sure.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on brightly? Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Motion to approve.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of requests, job requests. Yeah, just a summary, a summary report of some type. Right now, we never seen anything, so I'm just looking to see, like, what is it actually checking? What is it, what are we utilizing it for? That's all.
Sure.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on brightly? Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations. I'd be looking for a motion and a second for this, and then I'll let the Superintendent explain.
Ms. Agia?
So, I asked to hold both this and futures for the same question. Basically, I can assume it's just for staffing because we don't have, can't hire people. My question's more of the financial reporting on it, so just like last month, we should get something that, if we're taking this money, if it's not budgeted, and it was budgeted for salaries, we should see a transfer of some type at some point, like at the next, what is it, every quarter now?
Sure.
So, cultured care is something different. Cultured care is contracted nurses that we use for special ed students. So, that's not an FTE position that we currently have budgeted. That's something that's completely separate, that's budgeted in the contracted services line for special ed.
And that, and this amount is budgeted, like, there's a line item in the budget called cultured care, special ed nursing services?
No, we have, we have money in the contracted services line for sped. So, you're not going to see a line under, like, nurses or whatever that has money associated with this because we don't have FTEs to support this.
So, how much would it be in that line total, roughly?
I have to go and look at it. It's nearly, I believe, almost $2 million in that line that we have in sped.
And in that, within that line, we don't have a breakdown to know how much cultured care was taken up?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at it, no. But it, but that is where it lies.
It's probably this, close to this amount, I'm guessing.
Yes.
That's, I'm just doing, trying to do a check and balance to see if it's close to it.
Sure.
And the, the same one, the futures is the same? Because they always say we're trying to hire speech people, and we can't, so then we have, but the same budgetary question? Are those?
Futures is, we are continuously trying to hire people, and there, currently in futures, I believe, we have three SLPAs that are being funded with this contract.
And then, we have money left over?
We may have some money, but not, but not, not a lot, because I do, I still have money that was allocated in that line item for futures.
I'm just looking at, it says 400,000, and I don't think we're paying three SLPAs 400,000.
So, this is an estimate because of what we've used in the past, but we're, we currently have staffed for three SLPAs.
So, you got some cushion there?
Yes.
In case you have something?
Yes.
Thank you. I yield, thank you.
Anything further on cultured care?
Motion approved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Deb, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Finally, futures?
No, we haven't did. I just need to abstain from that vote.
Okay, so we'll have to have a-
Oh, futures, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, SMAC.
Motion approved? Futures went with the last one? Okay. So, we took those two together. Now, finally, the last one is SMAC. Ms. Roderick?
That's the one that I need to abstain from.
You asked us to hold it. Do you have any questions about it?
No, that's the one I need to abstain from.
Oh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a question on it.
Oh, okay.
It says BCBA services. Is that just specialized? What is?
So, we had a late resignation in August. I already had two existing open BCBA positions, so the late resignation services are highest need population at Stone and RPA. I was able to fill two out of the three with follow-up staff, but looking to fill that last one that really has the highest need students. We don't have a candidate pool that would meet that requirement, so while I'm continuing to look for someone, I'm requesting that we contract with SMAC, who has the experience of the BCBA's that we need for both Stone and RPA. And then, I'm going to continue to look to hire. When we do, we will bring on.
And if not, we, then my prior question about reducing a line item would be, if we're paying instead of the salary, this, it would get reduced?
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
So, this is, this is projecting for the year if we were needing to keep them for the year, but.
Sounds good. Thank you. Motion approved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on SMAC. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12-2 is a discussion and vote to approve the selection and appointment of Sheena Carrier, nurse for the Farber Public Schools as presented by Mary Gustaf, Director of Nursing.
Motion approved.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, any discussion on this young lady joining our staff? Hearing none. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 12-2 is a discussion and vote to approve the District Handbook as presented by Maria Potts, Superintendent of Schools. Ms. Potts?
What you have before you is the revised edition of the Follow-up, the District Handbook. Annually, we come before you with any revisions. There have been some language minor revisions, some pronoun revisions, and some clarifying language that, that was adjusted in the current edition, so we're looking to have the new handbook revised, approved. We actually added the revised attendance policy that was recently approved and replaced it with the old policy, but other than that, we don't have. And the technology policies that were approved also were the new revised ones were added to it. Other than that, it's language changes that were minor fixes.
Any discussion on the policies? Ms. Agia?
As I'm looking at it, it does show the Code of Conduct in here. So, I recall in the past having a separate discussion about the Code of Conduct. Has that happened at all, or is this just carrying over?
This is the carryover of the Code of Conduct. Dr. Braunhart is putting a team together that's going to make that work, that they're going to focus on this year and pull it apart and make revisions. So, currently, this is the, the current Code of Conduct that we have in place.
But it's under review, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I just think that we've always talked about it a little bit, and some of the policies and the duties of a school committee is to do policies, and here's, this is a chance for us to have a weigh-in on it, and it's just sort of in here. So, assuming that we're going to have meetings, subcommittees of some type?
Right. When she puts that team together, they pull it apart, and then we'll go through Subcommittee, and then ultimately through this full committee.
And the only other question I had is this, the Chromebook piece in here, there's, we had done this, I think, through the Technology Subcommittee?
subcommittee, and then ultimately through this full committee.
And the only other question I had is this, the Chromebook piece in here, there's, we had done this, I think, through the technology subcommittee?
Yes.
And I want to say there was something in there about sign-offs or something? Is that happening?
Yes.
So, every student that has, gets a Chromebook has signed off that if they break it, they're going to pay, and if they don't, they don't have a Chromebook?
Yes. And we're using Parents Square to communicate with families and students. They're getting the sign-off through that. But yes, when they're issued, we have it tracked with the serial number attached to the students.
So, if I'm hearing it right, so we have 10,000 students. We have 10,000 signatures from parents?
At this time, no. Often, schools are still tracking down signatures. Like Superintendent Ponce said, we send them out digitally via Parents Square. That is the cleanest option because it's a real time. If the parent signs off on it, we're noted, then the building passes them out. There are other buildings that use paper as a backup because some of the parents do not receive the email. So, those are the students right now that they're still tracking the students now. They do not get the Chromebook signed out to them.
So, what do they do in the meantime?
So, at the middle schools, we were able to put hundreds and hundreds of spares available in the classrooms. And at the other locations, the elementary schools, the classrooms, it's a little bit different. So, teachers have five or six devices until the, you know, the sign-off is complete. And at the high school, the high school has the highest complete signings. Matt Damaris and his team have been amazing. I think they're up to, I want to say it was 93% digital signatures as of last check.
So, my concern is just how long is this going to go on? And what's the incentive to sign off if you get one?
On my end, I just want to make sure that the kids have something in the classroom to use. So, we've been working with teaching and learning to make sure that they have stuff for the digital curriculums. And then, usually, the main offices and the admin team in the main offices, they try to have it buttoned up in the next few weeks. They don't let it go usually past October 1st.
So, you're thinking that by October 1st, we'll have all of them assigned one way or another?
I mean, that would be my goal, yeah.
All right. That sounds good. Please send us a note on October 1st with exactly how many they have.
Okay.
Thank you. I yield.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion and second, Deb?
No.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Item 12.3 is a discussion and vote to approve an addendum to the Durfee Program of Studies as presented by Matthew Damaris, Durfee High School Principal. Mr. Damaris.
Good evening, everyone. What you have before you should have been on the, on the August agenda, and we missed that. That's on me. The two proposed additions to the program of studies are a C P Biology class that should have been in there. There was an editing error on that, on that end. And then, the math class, Principles of Algebra and Geometry, is a senior-specific course that we're offering to students who still need to pass M C A S, but also need a fourth year of math. We worked with the Office of Instruction to make sure that the course that we offered is in alignment with what DESI is looking for in terms of course numbers and the standards that guide the course.
Motion approved. I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Upstage.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve DocuSign as presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer, and Laurie Obershan, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. Come on down.
So, you know, one of my goals since I joined this district was to work on our compliance. And part of our compliance requires us to get signatures from parents for many legal documents. Right now, when I look at past practice, our special education clerks, our supervisors, our team chairs, they are sending multiple emails. They are making phone calls. We are having couriers bring things to people's houses. And we still end up with all of that effort. It takes time. And with time, it makes us come out of compliance with DESI timelines, no matter what our best efforts are. So, we started to explore DocuSign, which is used by finance in our district. And when Frank Farias and I met with DocuSign, kind of explained what the needs are for just the legal documents that go along with special education, we came up with a proposal for you to consider, which would be 15,000 envelopes because that's how DocuSign uses or records things, is in envelopes. And even though you can put more than one document in an envelope, because of the timeline requirements, you can't keep an envelope open for too long. So, you have to make a new envelope for the same family, if that makes sense. So, based on us presenting what our needs are, and then they know their system, their software, we came up with a number of 15,000 envelopes as a good measure to start for this year.
On the technical side of it, this is just going to streamline Laurie's department as far as document. It's going to be a repository for those documents. It'll be a backup. It'll also be then uploaded into X2. So, there'll be two areas, secure areas, where these documents can live. The process in finance has been stellar. Started out slow. It is a much easier process. Just example, department head, I sign off on an invoice. It's sent to me electronically. I can sign it on my phone and/or computer. I send it back to the CFO's team. It's streamlining the process. Other districts that are doing I E P collection via DocuSign, they've had nothing but great things to say about it. I will say that X2 is probably 24 to 36 months away from being able to do digital signing within the platform. But right now, we need that product to get us through so that Laurie and her team can streamline that process.
I have one question. So, if you mail me, or I get my email, and it's the DocuSign element, am I going to have a conversation with somebody from special needs about what I'm signing before I sign it? Or am I just going to get the paper and fire, you know, like I do with a lot of the finance stuff?
Right. Well, you would have already participated in a meeting that reviewed all of those documents.
Okay.
This is nothing, we already do this as our current practice. So, you meet with your team. They review all the information. You take the document home with you. We send you the final proposal. You have time to call us, ask questions. This is just to make the signature component much more efficient for our department.
Makes sense. Anything further?
Motion approved.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on DocuSign? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12.5 is discussion and an update on the Technology Summer Projects and Aspen as presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
Good evening, everyone. So, first, we'll talk about our Aspen conversion. And I can say that at this time last year, we are leaps and bounds, light years ahead of where we were with the, our original transfer from Power School to Aspen. At this point, there were many sleepless nights last summer, and this summer, it has been much smoother. The conversion process has just been, there have not been as many flaws as there were during the initial one. By August 29th, we were 95% completed. There are still going to be times during this school year that we're going to be transferring data. As I mentioned before, we have a sandbox copy of everything Power School. That data is ours. Now, Mr. Michael Azak and his team can go back in there to pull data as we're doing, you know, certain pieces of data conversion. All the I E Ps, both old and new, are in. We are working on formatting issues. The one thing that I can say about this process that we learned when we went from Power School to Aspen and now back, that the communication between the departments has been key. On this side, with the special education department, Laurie and her team, and Kristen and her team have been working hand in hand with the SIMS team. It's made the process that much smoother. They're finding, you know, errors here. Aspen has been excellent because they're working through those errors. The response from the vendor this time has been far surpassed what it was. If we see an error, they're open to it. They're fixing it. They're actually stopping what they're doing. The support has been superior up to this point. We've had a couple of issues. We had one outage with X2. It was a whole northeast outage. Aspen went down for all the districts. This time, they contacted us to let us know that they went down, even though we knew we had gone down at the same time. So, the communication from the vendor piece has been excellent as well. We've been doing system administrative trainings with the core SIMS team. Two of our members, part of the original contract with X2, they've partaken in two, two-week classes. They're actually going to finalize their last two weeks sometime in November. So, now we not only have our SIMS coordinator, but we'll have two other individuals in the department that are admin-trained directly from X2. Student registrations, almost 1,000 registrations were processed with the Aspen piece. We used Registration Gateway before. When we knew that we were going to move away from Power School, we went to Aspen's version of Registration Gateway. Initially, some hiccups with language translations and just the way that it looked on the screen. However, now, it has been an excellent process. We've learned some things this year that we'll implement next year at that crazy registration time. But the process itself is working correctly. It's firing off the emails and firing off the work process that we put in place. So, very pleased with that part. State reporting, D E S E officially opened up their state reporting portal on 9/5. So, we are starting this year's reporting through Aspen. I can't say with the support of the committee and the way that we reworked the SIMS department, we were finished with state reporting the earliest that we've ever been in the last 20 years because Mr. Michael Azak had a team that he could farm out the work. He wasn't just doing it on his own. And I can say that there were, I believe, 1,300 errors initially, which is like so low compared to what we've had in the past. So, that team is working great. And they're actually excited about E Pims and the state reporting coming up because they have a process internally to turn it around that much quicker. Daily school operations, people are happy to see the workflow back. They're happy to see what they're comfortable with. Attendance scheduling, conduct, everything is going smoothly. If there's an issue, principals have been excellent. They contact SIMS. They work through them. Assistant Superintendent Braunhardt has been working closely with Brian and his team because we're going to do some changing now with conduct workflows and some things in attendance. But it's been growing smooth. And it's actually, I got a comment from the SIMS team that it's actually fun to be working through this stuff. They don't feel like the stress is there this year. They're comfortable, and they're able to, they have a vision for the future now. They're seeing what they want to do. And the nursing side, Mary and her team have been great, working through medication piece and all that. They're in a good place right now. We have some ideas moving forward that we will come to the tech subcommittee with in the future. We're in the process of training the F R E A gradebook mentors. We had a core group of gradebook mentors. We're actually expanding that a little bit. Brian and his team have been working on the trainings as we speak. And the last piece is Aspen is our SIMS, but it also talks to all of our different software platforms, Clever, EduClimber, all of them, Parents Square for one. So, we finally, every year, that's a little bit of a stress piece because it doesn't always go smooth. Frank Farias on the instructional side was able to work with Clever. We were to turn that around in 48 hours as opposed to the usual, like, two weeks it takes. And now, we're working through the one, two, Z issues as far as teacher schedules. But it's gone much smoother than anticipated. I'll be honest, much smoother than anticipated. The last pieces for data transmission were the Nutri Kids. So, that's our daily lunch program. That is actually firing off in the morning and at night, and we've had no errors. On the technology services side, we've had a lot of projects this summer. The first one, which took some time, was 2501. I can just let the committee know that as far as technology infrastructure wiring, we are complete on the two floors that we're going to occupy at this time. Classrooms have their Promethean boards installed. All of our network equipment is installed. We are just waiting on our fiber optic contractor to pull the fiber into the building. In the meantime, the building is retrofitted with wireless internet through one of our cellular providers to get teachers the internet they need to take attendance and have access to X2. We will be looking at, in cooperation with Ken and his team, wiring the third and the fourth floor, probably over Christmas break because we won't occupy those floors, you know, till next summer. The only piece on the technology side at 2501 is copy machines will be arriving on Wednesday, and they have a temporary one there now so that they can make copies for the students and the staff. You have before you the project status that we've been sharing through the summer. The two main projects, of course, are card access and, you know, camera installation. Card access, we are in the process now. The equipment has been ordered. The vendors are onsite, starting to begin the wiring. They have completed the Morton project, and they have completed Spencer Warden. They are now working on the elevator cab at Watson, and then they'll be going out to the other buildings. The thing that's nice about the card access project is they can be working while the students are in the building because 95% of the work is in the entrances. So, they sign in with security and the building admin team, and they go to work. They swap out the cans they're called, and then we bring that system online. At this point, it looks like right around Veterans Day, the buildings should be complete barring any major issues, that round of buildings that we approved. So, for card access, there'll be that one card for the majority of the buildings, this building being a separate system. But Ken and I are already looking at possibly marrying this building to the rest of the system. So, we have a one-stop shop. Camera installation, that has gone a lot slower than anticipated, and it's just the building construction. It's getting the wires to where we need cameras. So, where there were cameras that needed to be swapped out, it's a quick 20 to 25 minute at a camera. But if we're running a new piece of wire to a camera, it's taking hours at a time. So, we have on the project status, there are buildings that have completed. There are buildings that are very close to being completed. We would have had a few more buildings done, but I had to move some staff members and a low voltage electrician to 2501 because we had no infrastructure there. So, now that that's done, the two individuals, one from my department and the low voltage from Mr. Pacheco's side, they're going to get right back to it. And we have one vendor doing R P A because the work there required additional wiring because they had the oldest camera system. R P A does have all internal cameras up on the cloud. They're working on additional cameras now. They've sat, we've sat with Kyle Riley, the new principal, and some of the admin there for some of the areas that didn't have coverage before. So, that's what we're doing there now. Cameras, I'm hoping to have done right around the same time, right around Veterans Day, sometime in the middle of November. Now that it's slowing down with the open, I can actually move some other staff members to assist in that area as well. And then, just something good news for the committee, our last building was transferred over to VoIP, which was Watson School. So, now, all of our Fall River Public School buildings are on VoIP, and we will begin the internal audit. I'm going to sit down with Mr. Almeda. We're going to look at where we can do cost savings now because we've been promising cost savings for years, but we've always had to stop the projects because of funding. Now that the buildings are done, we'll look at an internal audit, and we'll be able to start to cancel some of those analog lines to see a cost savings. And I would say you'll start to see those savings right around the first of the year once we finish the audit, and we can start to cancel the lines. If there are any, you know, questions about any of the projects, I feel free to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cabral? Mr. Agia?
Just a quick question. The front page, where you talk about new student registrations, those are obviously new. But when we were, when the conversion was happening from Power School to Aspen, are all the students carried over or enrolled over from?
So, we actually saw this about a week ago. When we turned off Power School on June 27th, there were a handful of students that got lost from one system to the other. Brian and his team isolated those. Has been working with Mrs. Kudo and the Pace Center. Some of those students, we had to re-register in the new system, but I want to say it was less than 20 at that point.
And otherwise, every, that conversion time was fine? Everything?
That conversion, I've been through many conversions in my career in I T, and I kept going to Mrs. Ponce and saying that it was just, it was much smoother. I was real worried because we went from 20 years back. The plus for us was X2 never removed any of our historical data. So, we really had a year's worth of data to get back in, and then just some cleanup. We meet, we, biweekly with Brian, and we go over some things that, you know, we may want to remove. We're at the point now where this past Thursday, he said there are some things that he'd like to add. So, we meet as a team. We discuss them, and then he's been cleaning it up. But the conversion has been literally night and day compared to what it was this time last year.
And if it's only 20, I'm assuming that they're going to get them up this week?
They've actually, whatever was left in that old Registration Gateway, Brian and his team have already, I believe it's been taken care of.
Everybody's right.
Correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Any other questions? Ms. Larrabee?
Hi, Scott.
Hi.
Just about cuss and the pole cameras?
So, pole cameras, I had a vendor that was going to come out and cut the concrete. Ken and I talked about it. They're going to use a saw, and they're going to drop it below. And at the last minute, they said they couldn't help us. So, we have Sully Mack coming out to, to do that work. And we're going to do one pole, and then we're going to try to loop the remaining poles. But the one thing that I did do in the meantime is the vendor had a different camera that we've replaced on the outside of the building that actually gives me 180 to 1 zoom in. So, I can zoom in quite far with these cameras. I couldn't with the old ones. So, that'll give us that stopgap until they can do that work.
You have any idea about where?
So, they're going to come out, they're supposed to come out Thursday morning to look at it, and then they'll put us on their emergency list. And I have to talk with Ken. I don't know that side of it, the asphalt side of it. I just want to make sure we're doing everything correctly.
I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. 12.6 is a discussion and vote to approve the special education clerk job description as presented by Laurie Obershan, Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed.
Are you guys sick of seeing me yet? So, we have a special education clerk who is retiring in January, Lisa Schwinnard. Her responsibilities as a clerk are very different than the rest of the clerks. She actually handles a lot of the financial pieces for us, a lot of the state reporting for us, a lot of the Aspen work that is involved with special education. So, when her and I were talking about her transition into retirement and setting up the district for success, one of the things we looked at was the, her current job description. And it does not reflect any of the skills we need a person to have in order to be able to pick up where she left off. In speaking with the superintendent, I really wanted to get an accurate job description before you so that we could potentially hire and have an opportunity for Lisa to absolutely train a new person because Lisa does a position that only Lisa does, and she does it very, very well. And I would want someone to know what they were signing up for when they want to come and join my team and be able to be trained by Lisa. So, this is why we're presenting it to you tonight. Mr. Coogan can talk a little bit about, this was in a government place before, and so, it's going to be moving out of there. But I'll let him talk.
So, the Government Programs Unit at one time was quite large, and little by little, those positions have been absorbed into other units. The person that holds this position, it really is a very unique position. It's part finance, part record-keeping and reporting, and some clerical skills mixed in as well. When this person retires, whoever gets hired to replace this condition, this position, will go into the regular clerk's unit. So, this is actually a new position for the clerk's unit. So, we've just gone through it with the person who currently does those duties, created a job description that really shows the scope and the tasks involved. And we've gone over it with the clerk's unit, which will be absorbed in this position. And it's just, it modifies it to capture those duties in a, in a more accurate way. The position will be in the other unit, and it'll be paid according to that, that scale.
Any discussion on the special education clerk? Mr. Agia?
What is the current scale?
It's in the Government Programs Unit, which, going back about three or four years, the Government Programs Scale copied the scale in the regular clerk's unit so that we could sort of merge those two together. And that as one unit sunsetted and people went out, they could come in at the same scale, and it got rid of those disparities that existed between Government Programs Scale and the regular clerk's unit scale.
So, it's the same?
It is.
A pace deduction. As Ms. Obershan is talking, it seems like this is a larger position than a typical clerk.
Uh huh.
And I wonder if now is not the time to, to look at that. So, that if you compare the duties that I read in the job description, read in Ms. Obershan's description of what it is, the skill set, the responsibility, the totality of the job, it appears to me like it's worth more than a regular clerk's position.
There are two tiers, actually, three tiers within the clerk's unit scale. There's school clerks. There is regular office clerks. And then, there is the finance clerks. And this position would go into that second tier, that finance clerk scale. So, it is compensated because of the skill set that's required, and a little bit higher than a regular clerk's pay.
And do we have other people that do similar things in other departments that are under the same? Or are they under a different?
For instance, bookkeeping, payroll, those, those skill sets are a little bit more advanced than.
Where do they get paid?
They get paid in that second tier.
Like in the same tier, or is it?
It would be similar to this tier. For those clerks that have a higher skill set, that there is some background and experience is required for, that's, that's where this one works.
That's what I'm just asking. Is if we're going to take this on, are we putting this position in a similar? position in a similar role as everyone else that's in similar type of skill sets in clerical type positions in all departments?
Similar to the people that are doing this type of work, this level of skill, yes.
Across all departments, whether it's an S-NAN or a regular?
I don't know exactly which position you'd be referring to as an S-NAN. I, I would say this is probably not quite at the same level as a, as an admin assistant, but this is certainly compensated at the higher level that those other.
What is the skill set relative to an admin assistant?
I would say this involves a little bit more of the finance operation and, and record-keeping and reporting piece with, with respect to the confidential piece that's, that's a more integral part of the admin assistant role.
Everything I read here looks like this is confidential as well. This is talking records, this is talking?
With respect to the student records, yes, not the other stuff that would involve, you know, personnel and other things like that.
So this job and skill set of trying to get somebody is worth fifteen thousand dollars less than an executive assistant?
I would say this person is gonna make similar to what the person who currently holds the position holds, depending on the level of skill that they bring to the, the background when they're entered.
But it, is it worth fifteen thousand dollars less than an executive assistant?
I don't know that it's gonna be fifteen thousand less when it's all said and done because we don't have a replacement yet.
But the max is thirty-seven or forty-one?
That's step one. If it's somebody coming from the outside, the way the clerk's contract works, if there was a person from outside of the system, they would have to come in on step one because that's the way the union contract reads. If it were a person from inside the system that came in, they would come in on whatever step they're on. That's the starting salary that you see there.
Yes, the only thing I'm going on is what I'm reading?
Yep.
So that's why, so when it says the range that I was looking at, it said thirty-seven to forty-one.
Says starting, starting range, I believe.
But that's not the range?
It's not the entire range because that range is not available to somebody coming from the outside, the clerks' unit.
So if I had a, so let me get this right. So a person came in with twenty years of high-level experience with all of the skill sets in this, they're not eligible for the same salary as somebody that was working for us?
If they're not a member of that unit now, no, that's the way the clerk contract reads. It's very restrictive for outside hires.
So Ms. Obuchain wanting to hire the best person for the job will be restricted by only the folks that, that actually wanna work for the forty-one thousand, even though the job, if it was current, somebody could, could make fifty-five, which is the fourteen thousand dollar difference. So let's try to find the best people for the best jobs, but only if you worked for us, you can get fifty-five. If you happen to come from the private sector or some other school system that has all the skill sets, you're stuck at forty-one. That's what you're telling me?
Well, Mr. Aguirre, we're not gonna violate a union contract. We're not gonna violate a union contract. If you wanna offer that up as an amendment for the next negotiations, I probably gonna, I'm probably gonna vote with you, but right now we gotta follow the contract.
But Mr. Mayor, what I'm, what I'm talking about, if we, if we read the memo that came from Ms. Obuchain and Mr. Coogan, it talks about a person retiring. At this point, they're in Government Programs. This is our chance, this is our bite at the apple, whatever language you want to use to do it right. This is the time, right now. This has nothing to do with the contract, this is not, this is the Government Programs, this person's retiring, the Government Programs job is no longer gonna exist. If we feel that the job now, based on everything that I've just heard, is worthy of trying to get the best person to work for Ms. Obuchain and do the skills and, and work what's needed, we should take a second look at this because it's, really makes no sense why we would say somebody internal can get fifty-five thousand, but somebody that's external that has more skills or the best skills for the job can only get forty-one. This is the time that we can make that decision. This is not a clerical union position right now. I read the paperwork from Ms. Obuchain. Madam Superintendent, am I accurate or am I wrong?
That we have to, this is a time for us to look at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do need to look at it. We, we didn't, we didn't propose an admin assistant, is what I think I hear you say, instead of a clerk. What Ms. Obuchain was doing, she was looking within the parameters of that job, but she noticed that a typical clerk's job description looked very different than what Ms. Schwinnard has been doing for years and years and she wanted to make that more applicable to that specific position. So she was working within the parameters of the clerk. She never asked us for an admin assistance, certainly, but she was trying to streamline that process and make it more applicable.
But now's the time if we're gonna do anything different. And the logic that I just brought out was that if we hire only the person internal in the union, we could pay them up to fifty, whatever it is, because we don't see it here. So when I see the job description, it says the range is thirty-seven to forty-one, I think that's truth in advertising, that's what it is. But that's not what it is, I guess, if you worked for us, you might do that, but you might not be the most qualified person, but why, why force Ms. Obuchain to hire the most qualified person to do this important work? This work, if this doesn't get done right, costs us hundreds of thousands of dollars or maybe even millions. So let's not get the best person. Let's just say we're gonna hire the person at the lowest salary, but it, it just, to me, it doesn't make, it, it, we should get another bite at this apple. And if it means that we pay the person like an executive assistant, like every other person that is doing similar type of work, then I think we should take a pause, come back next month and, and look at it.
I, I think time is a little bit critical on this. So if the proposal is that you make this a non-union position, I would say that you have the opportunity to modify that now because it doesn't exist in the regular clerks'. However, there is a number of duties associated with this that following past, our practice of the past, those people would transition into the clerks' unit in either a finance or a clerical type position. So if the, if the intent of the committee is to vote to make this a non-union position, it doesn't exist within the clerks' union right now, it exists within the Government Programs Unit. And over the last three or four years, we've absorbed probably half a dozen positions that have gone from one clerical unit to the other clerical unit following the agreements we have negotiated.
And based on, on the information that Ms. Obuchain presented of the drastic nature of the difference in what's in writing versus what the reality of the position was, I do think that it's, it's time that we do that. So I'll make a motion that we amend this recommendation to be an executive assistant, which will allow her to hire the best person for the job and save us hundreds of thousands of dollars with the same job description.
Can I?
Ms. Larrabee?
Be good for now?
Just go a second, somebody go a second to have a conversation.
Oh, I'll second it.
What?
We need a second just to have, to finish the conversation.
Ms. Larrabee?
So is this the only contract that has that language?
Which, what language you refer?
This government, so is this the only position, I should say, that has that language?
Which language?
It's the clerk. It's the clerk, what am I trying to say?
The clerk union.
Yeah, clerk, so it's all the clerks that have this language?
So we have a clerks' unit, it's a regular civil service clerical union and there's probably fifty-one or fifty-two positions in that currently right now.
And they all have the language?
And, and their clerk unit, they have the positions that are within their unit now. This other unit, this Government Programs Unit, at one time had administrators, teachers, all, all different kinds of positions in there. Little by little, those positions have been absorbed by other units. The last holdouts for those units is about five or six parers in that unit and there's probably another five or six clerks. The clerks and the parents have not absorbed these positions yet. What we're doing is through attrition. As people leave those positions, when we get replacements, we're putting them into the regular clerical union, depending on the job description, et cetera. Several of those have been regular, typical clerk positions or some positions at the parent center, et cetera. So those have been absorbed into a regular unit as we've replaced those so that we now have a single unit. These are, these are the last four or five clerks that are left, that left existing in the Government Programs.
Four or five, okay, so four.
And, and what we did was put sunset language in, in that, that bargaining unit, that anybody hired after a certain date is no longer recognized by the Government Programs Unit, they're now recognized by the regular clerical unit.
Okay, so we're saying because of urgency and timing?
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to, what we're trying to do is capture the legacy knowledge of the person who does this sort of unique position. And, and it is a very.
Right, I mean, I, I, I agree with Mr. Aguirre and if, if the superintendent says that also, this is the time that we should probably be looking at this.
Right.
I mean, Ms. Obuchan, is this the time to be looking at this? To, to hold and think about it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just request, like, what could I bring back to you so that this, my goal is to have Ms. Schwinnard, who is the expert, have time to train someone before she retires January first, around there. So I was hoping that whatever you need, I'm happy to come back and bring to you guys, but being able to post, hire, onboard all of those pieces, that's all that I was trying to be proactive about.
That's why I would say, if we're gonna amend, let's amend now rather than wait another month.
Okay.
To try to capture that time.
Yep, I yield. Thank you.
Okay. Motion still on the table?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Sorry.
Mr. Aguirre, can you repeat your motion again, please?
It's to just take this position and talk about it as an executive assistant, which will be an S-NAN contract rather than the salary, the terms of employment and salary and benefits as presented by them, which will allow them to make sure they hire at the right time. It's just gonna allow for Ms. Obuchain to hire the best and brightest person based on the salary because we know most people come on salary. So we try to recruit somebody with this skill set from somewhere else, they might be making fifty-two thousand, but if we, if she has to say sorry, you can only make forty-one because you're new, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Jabeley?
Yes.
Ms. Jahara?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, so we're gonna come back to this position as an S-NAN.
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify? Just, we're not gonna come back, they're just gonna hire.
No, no, I mean, that position will come back as an S-NAN.
Perfect, thank you.
Twelve-seven is a discussion and vote to approve the addition of two, one-to-one power.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion.
There we go.
And a second to approve two power professionals at Henry Lloyd Community School. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Jabeley?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-eight is a discussion and vote to approve to raise the contract threshold as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening. So the, the current threshold for the school committee has is ten thousand dollars to approve every contract. So we bring the contracts to you every month that are over ten thousand dollars and request approval from you. What I'm looking to do here is to increase that threshold to twenty-five thousand dollars and the reason I am bringing that forward to you is due to the fact that, you know, given the time that we're in, costs have increased, which have pushed some of these limits. In addition, the state has upped all their limits in requi, in, in regards to purchasing. So at the state level, the purchasing requirements have gone from twenty-five to fifty thousand and from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So with that, I'm looking for the, the potential to increase our threshold to twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition, so you can see in the back, on the second page that I provided to you, I have provided you with a listing of how many contracts have been approved over the last three years and you can see how many of those contracts fall within the limits that I'm talking about. So I provided you with contracts that are up to twenty-five thousand, up to twenty thousand and up to, up to fifteen thousand, just for your reference. And so with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
I, I have one question, Mr. Almeida. When did the ten thousand threshold start, if you remember?
Honestly, Mayor, I have no idea. And I say that to you because it's prior, it's prior to me being here, so.
How long have you been here?
I've been here since two thousand and eleven.
And any further questions or discussion? Mr. Aguirre?
So in the memo, it, the second part, so the first paragraph is about the raising it to twenty-five thousand, the second paragraph's about thirty-B. Are those, are you talking two different things?
No, so I've, I've referenced thirty-B and the reason I've referenced thirty-B is because of the limits and how the limits have changed over the last couple of years.
But the top part would still be thirty-B?
I'm sorry?
The top part of going from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, you'd still have to use thirty-B?
Yes.
So the only question I have is it says here, note under chapter thirty-B, the state changed its guidelines and have raised the threshold to ten thousand to a hundred thousand, which was originally ten thousand to fifty thousand. But it's not saying that the state raised it ten thousand to twenty-five.
So the ten thousand, so the, the ten thousand just applies to how many, how much, how many quotes that you have to obtain. So anything over ten thousand dollars, we have to obtain three quotes for that work. So that will not go away. What would go away is just the, the fact that we have to come to you for anything over ten thousand dollars in between twenty-five thousand dollars, that's what would go away.
Not necessarily thirty-B, that's an internal control that, that we have?
Correct, correct.
Is what you're saying?
Yeah, so our, our, let's, let's just say, how can I say it, is, our threshold is much, much more stringent than, I'll say, everybody else. So I, you know, I've contacted our other urban districts here and I'll be completely honest with you, I was amazed by what other districts do. Our, our policies are much more stringent than everybody else and what we currently do and I, and I do feel that, you know, we need to have that in place to ensure that we're doing the proper thing, you know, by everyone here. But, you know, there is a big gap in what people do compared to what we do. So, you know, I, I, one of the districts I spoke to said that the school committee, the school committee does not get involved with anything under four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I had another district who said the school committee doesn't get involved at all, that they don't approve any warrants, that they don't have any official votes at their school committee meetings for any contracts. And, you know, so I'm not, you know, moving forward, requesting to change what we do, I'm just requesting that we change the limit from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, and there's a reason why we do the ten thousand, to have a check in the balance.
Correct.
That's what school committee members get elected to do.
Correct.
So I can appreciate what you're saying. The, you know, my, my thing is just that if, as we go forward and we've been saying this over the last several months, I for one have a concern with sometimes how we hire, how we, who we hire, how we solicit people. We're not going to the local person. We've given several, what I'll say, no-bid contracts that I, I'm not comfortable with.
Yep.
So the more that those things keep happening, the less confidence I have that everybody's doing what they need to do to try to get the local person, to get the, so I'm gonna vote for this, but I also just wanna reiterate my concern and you as a finance person, I'm just telling you, my own personal concern is that I don't think we're going necessarily to the local person all the time, even to give them a shot at it, and I don't think we follow the regulations like I think we should. We might say, oh, it's, we can do this, we can do that, but I'm not saying anybody's doing anything illegal, but I personally would like to see the local person get a better shot at it than a few of the no-bid contracts that came out.
Understood.
With that, I will support this, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion second, any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Jabeley?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?[1604.62] Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-9 is a discussion and vote to approve the 2023 eligibility application to the Community Preservation Committee for the following project, replacement and restoration of the front patio, railing system at 417 Rock Street, as presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, so any discussion on this project? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-10 is the follow-up, is a discussion and vote to approve the 2023 eligibility application of the Community Preservation Committee for the following project, replacement and restoration of 7D8 windows at 417 Rock Street, as presented by Ken Pacico, the Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any discussion? Mr. Aguirre?
Just a comment, I think this is the one that was here before, and it says 2022 in the document, but I think it's current. But it's basically the same project, it's just going to go forward. Thank you, I yield.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-11 is a discussion and vote to approve the usage of the Durfee High School parking lot to hold the fall of a drive-in movie night on October 6, 2023, as presented by Ken Pacico, the Chief Operating Officer.
Motion approved, second.
I have a motion, second. Deb, please call the, oh, Ms. Aguirre?
Just, I'm assuming this is coming forth because that property is still, the auditorium and the parking lot are still under the school department. If I could just get a report, I had understood there was some damage done to the auditorium earlier, a couple of months ago. If I could just get a report on that, appreciate it. Not right now, under separate cover. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Aguirre?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Well, this event on October 6, we'd like to invite all the families out. This is going to be the movie Transylvania. It's also going to be trunk or treat night for the fall of public schools, and CD Recreation will be having their exhibits, their hamburgers and hot dogs, and maybe we'll have a costume contest and a few things. So if you're looking for a fun night on October 6, we'd love to have you join us.